Wednesday, March 20th, 2013, Planning Commission. Can we have roll call?
Planning Commissioners Astorion.
Here.
Landrigan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Sheets. Chairperson Yassine.
Here. Can we have report regarding posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 13th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Great. Okay. Everyone can follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the minutes?
Second.
Okay. Can we have roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. I don't have any cards for oral communication. Our next item is zoning appeals, new business parking reduction permit number, PPRP 1211310. Location, so location is wrong on this. Supposed to be 515 South Glendale Avenue, Karina's Cake House. Do we have staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Yassine. This case before you is located at 515 South Glendale Avenue, known as Karina's Cake House. That is between Lomita and Chevy Chase, on the, Chestnut, thank you, on the west side of Glendale Avenue. The applicant is proposing, or in this case requesting, the reversal of the planning hearing officer's denial of their parking reduction permit to allow the expansion of the existing bakery, change of use of two residential units, which are located at the rear of the site, to commercial and elimination of existing residential parking onsite while not providing the required additional onsite parking for the commercial uses and the remaining residential unit at the rear. The project will result in a 14 parking space shortfall for both the commercial and the residential combined. In terms of the site characteristics, the site is 11,370 square feet. It is developed with two separate buildings. And the front is the commercial, which consists of the bakery and a flower shop. And the front of the lot, excuse me, at the rear of the lot, we have the three residential dwelling units with two private and enclosed residential parking spaces, or in this case, private garages at the rear of the lot. The site currently has seven onsite parking spaces, and they are uncovered. The bakery currently is 2,000 square feet and the flower shop is 830 square feet. The bakery proposes to add 2,326 square feet of floor area. The proposal includes a 501 square foot addition to the rear of the existing bakery, the elimination and conversion of two existing residential parking garages into floor area, and the conversion of two dwelling units into commercial floor area, for a total of 1,825 square feet. The total floor area for the bakery with all the additions included will be 4,326 square feet. And ultimately, the attached, the project will ultimately attach the two buildings. In terms of the parking deficiency, so that you get an idea in terms of requirements, a retail requires four spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area. So the total required number of parking spaces would be 21 spaces for the commercial uses only, taking into account the existing 830 square foot flower shop, the existing bakery of 2,000 square feet, plus the addition to the bakery, which would be 2,326 square feet. And the residential unit that would be remaining would require a two parking space covered and enclosed garage, but they are not proposing any. In terms of the planning hearing officer's decision and why, a brief synopsis would be, the reason why it was denied was because, first of all, there was no evidence presented at the hearing that would substantiate the parking reduction of the 14 spaces and how it would not further negatively, or evidence being how it would further negatively impact the nonconforming onsite parking situation and the neighborhood parking conditions. The existing parking shortage along Glendale Avenue is evident, and also the park, there's a significant parking deficiency along the residential neighborhoods. In this case, Chestnut would be the first street going south along Glendale Avenue that one would approach, and you have Lomita to the north. And finally, not providing code required parking for the residential and for the commercial, again, would heavily impact an area where lack of parking is an ongoing problem, as noted by other city divisions, in this case, Neighborhood Services and Traffic. So additional facts presented are in your staff report in terms of why, or reasoning why the case was denied. Also, in addition, I'd like to mention that the applicant did submit a parking study. They submitted that to this morning. If you haven't had a chance, please review it. Staff did look over it and determined that while they have noted that there are spaces in the area, in this case, on-street parking spaces, staff also has on file a document which shows, a parking survey that was conducted in 2010, which shows that there is a parking deficiency in the area. If you notice on the map, specifically Saturdays.
Which map?
That would be Figure 34 entitled "Saturday Parking Occupancy." If you look at, for example, the hours between, let's say, 12 and 2, being that this is a cake house, and they've mentioned that their specialty is preparing cakes for weddings or any other types of special events, there's, what they're mentioning is that there is a turnover in terms of customers coming in, pick up their cake and they leave, or there's deliveries. But still, if there's customers, they're going to need parking. And also the fact that if there's going to be a residential unit remaining onsite, there's going to need, there's going to be a need for parking. So let's take, for example, the 12 to 2 timeframe. If you notice, the property, I know it's kind of small, but if you can notice where between Lomita and Chestnut on the west side, it's highlighted in a, or colored like a fluorescent green, it shows that it's 51 to 79 percent occupied. Now, if you turn around the corner on Chestnut, it's sort of like an orange color. That depicts 91 to 100 percent parking occupancy, which tells us that Saturday is a problem. If you compare it to Tuesday, Tuesday is the fluorescent, well, Tuesday is that fluorescent green color again along, and this time along Chestnut, right, I want to say closer to Glendale Avenue, and then it becomes a little more heavily occupied as you continue going west on Chestnut. So staff does have concerns regarding the parking situation there. And the last document that I included was the on-street parking inventory when compared to the parking inventory prepared in the study prepared, submitted by the applicant. Staff does not agree with the numbers because, again, we have six spaces along, right in front of the property, four continuing south on Glendale Avenue, and one to the north. And then only 16 spaces available along Chestnut Street. So if you have a parking deficiency of 21 spaces, that would obviously not, sure.
Let me, if I may, the numbers that you just indicated is off of the Nelson Nygaard staff report, or is it off of what they just gave us?
No, Nelson Nygaard staff report.
Okay. So we're not talking about what they've given us yet?
That is correct. Just, again, what I was trying to explain is when staff reviewed their document compared to our document, prepared by Nelson Nygaard.
Okay. So.
There's a discrepancy.
Forgive me, I, you know, these are all new to me right now, so I'm trying to digest it as.
Slowly.
Much as you can digest after a late lunch. So here's my question. You have a 12 to 2 on a Tuesday and a 12 to 2 on a Saturday from Nelson Nygaard. You've compared this to what they have given you.
Yes.
This one, right? And what I'm seeing in theirs is that as opposed to Nelson Nygaard that says off-street or on-street is six, they're showing five.
Correct.
Pretty close.
Close.
Okay. And so what else is a difference?
Well, they don't mention the locations specifically. Hold on a sec. Viliya brought to my attention that they're only showing existing, correct, Viliya, but they're not showing the proposed parking.
Okay.
And I don't want to jump in for milk, but the traffic study that was submitted by the applicant earlier today only deals with the existing site conditions. It does not take into account the expansion of the business. It states that if there's no additional counter or retail space added, it appears, appears that the parking would be sufficient. But again, that doesn't take into account that the business is expanding and that staff, the planning department cannot limit the actual use once the, once the establishment itself has been permitted, in terms of changing out the tenant improvement space inside.
Is there a breakdown of, do we require different parking, do we have different parking requirements for the type of retail space?
No.
Is it four, 4,000 square feet for all retail?
For all retail, it's four per thousand, correct.
And so.
If it's, again, if it's categorized as retail.
Right.
Because you could have a gym, and that's commercial, but it has a different, for example, it has a different parking requirement.
Right. Or a bar or something.
Exactly. Restaurant or fast food, they're different.
So, and have we ever done, or has Nelson Nygaard ever done a study for like bakeries where, I mean, I, where it might be a different type of use of retail, the type, the kind of parking demand that a bakery might have?
If I could, the Nelson Nygaard study was to determine, was in conjunction with studies about whether there should be parking districts in the area of the South Bram Plan. They did not study different land uses, no.
It didn't, it didn't study the different kind of retail, what?
It was just a, a study of how many spaces there are and then what were the occupancies, how many of them were used. Didn't attempt to attribute it to this business or that business.
Okay. Got it. There, you guys have any other questions?
I have one more question. So I, you know, I understand now Figure 34 and 33. What's Appendix B?
Appendix B is basically just showing what the on-street parking inventory was, and I don't know specifically what day it was taken.
Every day.
But I'm assuming it's the every day, how many parking spaces would be able to accommodate vehicles along, for example, Glendale Avenue, Chestnut. Again, I don't know if at that time, you know, certain red curbs exist or didn't exist. Do you see what I mean?
You don't know what year this is?
I know it's 2010. I just don't know what, 2010, how many, for example, red curbs, painted curbs existed.
Right.
Do you see what I mean? Or maybe yellow or 50-minute time zone.
And is this just for the west side, or is it, is it both east and west?
This is only, based on this, it's only the west side of Glendale Avenue.
Okay. So now I see a lot of blue and green as opposed to the, the green and the orange on this one. Which color do I get acclimated with more than the other?
Surrounding the property would be purple to the north, which shows that there's 21, 25 spaces available on the south side of Lomita. And the dark green would show, show six to 10 is the representation, in this case, six spaces available on the west side of Glendale Avenue. And then the dark blue represents 11 to 20 spaces available along, in this case, there were 16 on Chestnut.
Okay.
The colors in Appendix B don't have anything to do with the colors in the other charts.
Yeah. It's just a total number, and then this is the usage, basically, or the percentage that is varied.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Toledo, I have a question. At the moment, you, we already have four covered parking spaces for the residential, right?
Well, the, the appear to be one car parking spaces. So there would be a total of just two, correct? Just two spaces, based on what we can see.
And there are two spaces, and this is legal nonconforming use.
Correct.
But there are two covered parking spaces at the moment. So it would lose any legal nonconforming, be removed because?
Be removed, so you're exacerbating an existing nonconform by making it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any questions anymore. We'll go on with the applicant's presentation.
Happy to do that.
Great. And Ms. Thotler, would you remind how much time he has available?
I will not need that. Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, is the microphone on?
I think so.
For the record, my name is Mark Oberenbilly, and my address is 109 East Harvard. And I believe the staff made a somehow accurate presentation of the case, and we appreciate that. By the same token, we do understand that the staff could not approve the project at the time, because by definition, the staff is looking at the narrowest possible perspective of the project, and that's why a commission is created, to look at the larger picture and to look at an overview of that. That's the reason we are in front of you. At the same time, I would like to emphasize that we will substantiate the small print of the issues in front of you, but at the same time, I think it is beneficial to look at the overall picture to have a better understanding from our perspective, at least. What is in front of you is actually very simple. Two buildings, one commercial, one residential. The commercial has got a flower shop and a bakery. The residential has got three units. What is proposed, in fact, is to add 500 square feet to the retail, and we do understand that by doing so, there is a price to pay and a compromise to make. And that's why we are sacrificing, as a matter of fact, two of the residential units and making one of them into an office space, which requires minimum parking spaces, making the other into the kitchen. And while the staff is essentially correct that the square footage, the way it is presented is actually doubled, in reality, it is a misleading representation, because of the 500 square feet that is being added is solely and solely a walk-in cooler and the pathway to the walk-in cooler. The change of use, in fact, has been done for two reasons, because we are adding to the production space, again, I repeat, not the sales or the publicly available space, but purely to the cake preparation area, because market is changing. Now, the, of the 1,000 or so square feet of the actual kitchen area, about 250 or 300 are purely, again, cold storage. So it, I think it's like, I just want to put it in perspective. It's true that the retail space was 2,000, it's true, it's 4,000. But I want you to understand that 2,000 stays at 2,000, like, whatever, 800 square feet or 1,000 square feet, which are accessible to the public, are the same. We're just adding walk-in coolers and cake preparation areas. So that's very important, I think, to put that in perspective. Having said so, we are compromising two of the units, reducing the density of the residential uses, which are nonconforming for one parking, and then that's basically what we're proposing. The question here is, how far does a family-oriented business need to go to keep up with the necessities of the today's business environment and stay in the business? There's an issue with the parking. I do have a problem with that, and I strongly defer with the staff, and that is the following. The city parking requirement is purely based on the assumption that there was a variance granted at a certain time, and thus, it is not applicable to the current codes of the city. If this were the case, if you were to be calculating what is nonconforming, I would have to provide additional parking spaces for the additional addition or any change of uses that I had. If that were to be the case, my requirement would have been only five parking spaces. Well, and as a matter of fact, it would have been four parking spaces, because if I'm converting three parking spaces by providing two parking spaces of which one is handicap, I'm allowed to do that. So in reality.
What you're handing over is going to be just submitted to the public.
What it would have been, the actual shortcoming of the parking, so I defer from the point of view, and the staff is right, because they are looking at, at the narrowest possible perspective of saying, there was a variance granted, there was a nonconforming situation, and I don't care whether this is a storage or this is a walk-in cooler, that's the way I calculate, I understand that. But this is, in any event, that's what I would like to present to you. Now, I believe that's an obsolete mathematical calculation that the staff is forced to do, and by the same token, I do not agree with that. Furthermore, the very, we do, we have submitted to you a parking study. In fact, I believe the parking study provided is 100 percent, you know, supporting, actually, the staff, the report prepared by Nelson, because it substantiates two issues. First of all, there is, if you look at the number, something like, you know, 60, 70 parking, on-street parkings on there, it's a heavily neighborhood-oriented business, which means it's a heavily pedestrian-oriented business, and a lot of businesses are basically in a foot traffic. Thirdly, by, by the same definition, in the worst-case scenario, we have a shortage of parking on Saturdays, granted, okay, so be it, you're right, not arguing with that. But is that like, you know, an issue to say, you know, if on Saturday, between 12 and 2, there is like, you know, congestion and like, you know, the rest of the month, we are okay? And, and there is a sufficient number of parking based on exhibit we are on-street? So I believe there is an issue of neighborhood accessibility for pedestrian access. I do believe that the calculation of saying that we are short by 14 of parking spaces, although legally correct by the staff, is misleading in the sense it's based upon certain assumptions. And furthermore, I do, we have done, you know, an analysis of the walk score, which gives the property a rating of 91, and again, I will hand five copies of that to you, which is exceptionally high, and it heavily emphasizes the fact that it is a very neighborhood-oriented property, and there are nine bus lines serving the area. And the area that we are adding is actually not creating access for the public, it is just a time-consuming process of the change in the market of making cakes, because if you're making a wedding cake, like, you know, there is a certain number of decorations that people are used now to do, it is time-consuming, but it does not require additional employees, nor does it change actually your actual sales of traffic. What it does, in reality, is either that is delivered or it's picked up, so the turnaround is actually very fast. So we believe what you have in front of you is actually a very reasonable request, and it was denied in our reading by misrepresenting or misreading the requirements. With all due respect to the staff, I do believe that they are doing the right thing by looking from their perspective, but then, at the end of the day, what is more desirable, to allow a small business with a minimal impact to continue its existence with significant sacrifices on their end, by, i.e. the elimination of two residential units, or to force them out of Glendale as many other businesses in the past? So I think, you know, the case is very clear in front of you. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't want to belabor the point. I think you're very familiar with these cases, in similar cases. I'll be at your disposal if you have questions, and I hope I haven't overstepped my time limit. Thank you.
You're well under it. Do we have any questions? Mr. Lee?
I'd like you to elaborate a little bit more on your market change. You know, when you mentioned during your presentation, your need was.
The pleasure.
Based on the market change. Now, obviously, the business must be doing well, you know, for you to consider expansion here. What is causing, I mean, what is it that's driving this request right now, and what market change are you talking about? Does that, by having more production capability at the site, invite more customers to the location, thus exacerbating this parking issue?
I'll be happy to, Commissioner Lee. So this, this is the reality. And in Glendale, we have probably done, probably seven or eight of those, so, you know, including the most, two recent ones, one of them, the very famous one, which is delivering all over, like, you know, Southern California, big name, you know, company. This is basically what has changed. A typical bakery does a certain number of baking goods, and those are sold by piece, by, you know, by pound or whatever they are done. And then there are special orders. The special orders are typically for Halloween, for Christmas, for, you know, birthday parties or, or weddings. Now, the market has changed in that sector. That is, you know, your bakery hasn't changed, you know, people still are doing, you know, whatever, you know, on the items are. But the changes are that the market has changed in the sense of the taste and the requirements of, of the birthday cake, or the wedding cake, or the Halloween cake. If you are looking at any of the cooking shows, you see those elaborate things coming up, and that's exactly what's happening in the market, which means I'm still making, like, you know, a three-story, like, you know, cake for a wedding, or for a birthday, or for, again, like, you know, for a Christmas party, but I do need to spend much more time on that for decoration, and I do need the space to keep it cool, because, you know, it takes longer time, because you do it in pieces. If I'm just making, for example, like, you know, a French type of a dessert, I make them like, you know, in a certain pan, I divide it in 10 pieces, and then I'm done, basically. In this case, I have to spend more time in preparing it and more time in just physically keeping it in a cold environment. That is exactly the trend that you see in any of the cooking shows or competitions, and that is what the market is requiring. So the number of customers, hopefully, will still increase, but the number of the customer increase is actually in that market. It's not like, you know, buy the 10 pieces of cookies that I buy, which is typically neighborhood-oriented, nobody's going to drive from, like, you know, North Glendale to South Central just to buy like 10 pieces of cookie. But special orders, people will drive from Burbank, Pasadena, La Cañada, whatever, because that is what they do, and that's a huge thing, because you need space for them in the coolers, because they are larger and they need to be assembled, you know, in a certain time. You can't just, like, you know, put whipping cream on, you know, four-story, you know, wedding cake, and then at one stop. You just do it in pieces, you keep it cool, you do the second portion, then you assemble, and then you make it ready for delivery. And by the way, 99 percent of these are being delivered, because the size of them is not easily done in my, you know, tiny little jeep.
Do you guys deliver yourself?
I do. I do not do any deliveries. I do architecture.
The bakery.
Of course I do deliver. I mean, you know, they have the equipment to deliver, because they have the vans that you can, you know, go in with a cart into the van and then secure it, not to wobble too much, you know. You typically, in any of these large pieces, physically, you cannot transport on your own unless you have a big SUV or a smaller.
So the, these very large pieces, people normally don't come to pick them up.
You don't have a choice. I mean, you don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Follow-up question.
Sure.
What percentage of your business is just cake, cake business for us here?
I can certainly ask. I can certainly ask the owners, they are present here, you know, that that I think would be a fairer question to ask. May I may I ask them? Because, you know, they know it much better.
Yes.
So the answer, the answer is, you know, you know, in order for--
Forty percent now?
No, forty percent of the production today is large, large scape, you know, orders.
What was it before?
No, no, today is forty percent. What will be in the future, we don't know.
Oh, I see.
What today is, is forty percent. So that is the growing market, in fact.
Landry?
I have a couple of questions.
Actually, I can answer them.
I think you probably can. Parking is not just for customers, it's also for employees.
Correct.
So if you're increasing this workspace, one would hope that you would need more employees to use it. So that would be a question, how many employees are there at the moment in in the cake production? And if there's going to be increase? And how many employees are there at the floor shop? And the reason I ask is because those employees need to be accommodated in that calculation. It is not just a customer turnover calculation. Secondly, you are actually removing two parking places. So you are exacerbating the existing parking non-conformity and and the, so you're reducing parking. So to me, I hate to say it, when you're looking at what you're talking about here, expansion of building or use, generally, it seems that by doing that reduction, this doesn't apply to you.
Okay. Let me let me answer the two questions. First of all, let me let me ask--
Okay.
So that I'm not misled. The number of employees today--
You have to come and state it over here. And state your name for the record.
Gar Nazarian with Domus Design, 109 East Harvard Street, 306. The bakery has six employees, which four of them, they live in immediate vicinity, they walk to work, and only one employee comes in car by, you know, carpooling another employee. So only one employee car, it will be onsite.
Okay. And the second question is, if this is expanded, if this is adding to the number of employees, or the the same number of employees will have to do that?
Hmm, actually, the one thing that, you know, I talked with the owner, the business owner, they don't have any plan to add more employees. As Marco explained, the more room it's needed, you know, to store, to keep the product onsite for a certain period of time. And because of that, you see that 500 square feet addition connecting two buildings, it's just for cold storage. And checking the floor plan, inside of the change-of-use area, I have a huge, again, dry storage. So the number of the employees, it won't be changed, is not planned to do that, just more space to store and to prepare these big orders, that is why needed.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And I did emphasize the fact--
And so if you look at 30, 32.030, it says that this is actually, upon change or enlargement of a building, at the end, it says, without diminishing the existing parking provided for the existing use, et cetera. So by removing two of them, this no longer is a valid, I think, code section for you to quote.
You are correct in the sense that I am losing the non, the existing non-conforming situation. You're correct in that.
But it doesn't say existing non-conforming.
No, no, but the point is the following. In order to compensate, my mitigating measures are, if I were to have three, three units, and if I were to rent the three units to three different people, I will have to to have like six parking spaces for them, which I don't have, which I have two only today. So I, that is the compromise that that I am making by sacrificing them. One is being converted into office for the same business, or the same person is going up and down, it's not another office or the rental, it's the same, you know, for the for the same entity. The second is, I am providing, the the reason, in fact, that we are in front of you is because we are requesting a parking reduction. What we are contending is that, in actuality, if this, there was not a previously approved variance case, that would have been the scenario that one would look into. I am still short of it. In fact, the residential unit, I am short of the providing, not one at this, in this case, but two, because, you know, now I need to comply with the new code. Irrespective of the fact that people leaving there are the parents of the of the owners' owners, which basically, I mean, they don't have even a car, but irrespective of that, that is true, you know, that you're you're correct on that. And that is why we are mitigating with what we are proposing.
Mr. Lee?
I have one more question. The number of employees you have, you mentioned that, you know, four of them are within walking distance of the shop, and they'll be walking, they will not be driving car to the place. But we cannot always assume that, because, you know, you cannot guarantee that those employees, you know, at one time, you might have six cars there, you know, so, you know, that is something that, you know, we need to take into account, of the number of employees driving to the the location.
Of course, but this is not, this is, you're correct, but this is, this is an issue that is not unique nor to Glendale, nor to this particular property. And and basically what you do, you address the overall picture, and that's that's part of it. That's absolutely correct. By the same token, this is a very heavily residentially dense area, which means that you have a lot of potential, both for employees and clientele base that are that are close enough. And as the report says to you, this is, it is heavily served by public transportation. What else can I do? I mean, at the end of the day, certain cities, like Beverly Hills or Santa Monica, have opted to provide certain number of parking parkings, because that is providing parking throughout the city. Glendale, you know, which I have been very heavily involved, is very short in number of parking structures providing that. Having said so, that is no reason to basically force a business out. I mean, that's basically what the reality is, and we're trying to mitigate that as best as we can.
Have you looked at the possibilities of maybe a surrounding area with ample parking space to get some sort of--
On another property?
Yes.
Well, there's a, there's a, there is a, I think there is a minimums distance that you need to do, and there is not really much available in the in the in the area that you can, you know, you can rent parking space. You know, we have done that many times in many projects, but like, as as you see on that, there is plenty of parking on-street parking, but not necessarily on private properties, because all private properties are similar to that. And I can't go like 500, 600 feet away, because I need to be in the vicinity to be able to to be warranted that.
Commissioner Lee, this this document, the walk score, in in the real estate business, we use it a great deal. I mean, this is something that is a very high number. I mean, what it's, what it indicates is that a lot of folks in that area, wherever they're shop, whatever, now they're shopping, they they take the the route of walking as opposed to anything else, which is something that we have tried to encourage in City of Glendale, especially especially in downtown, and hopefully, you know, they'll find its tentacles to the other locations. So walk score of 91, when when somebody tells me four of their employees, or five of their, four, did you mention?
There's just one who uses the car.
Four of their employees live and work at the same location or around it, within walk distance. This 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 is sufficient proof for me to really, it's make it plausible. Okay? And so this 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 walk score, and I keep emphasizing it, and folks, you are going to see a whole lot more sophisticated analysis of this walk scores as in years, as as we go forward. The other comment that I wanted to make, and I don't mean to fly off tangent here, we watched the city council meeting last night. This city, this city manager, and kudos to the planning department, Mr. Foy, Mr. Hagani, and the rest of you, is trying to streamline all of these things. I mean, I'm looking at the case in front of us. If it's six months from now, or eight months from now, this case would have been handled by the staff, it would have never come to the the in front of the planning commission. And that's what that streamlining is trying to do. Exactly, precisely for what Mr. Brombilla just suggested. So we would not lose the small businesses, which are the vein of the sales tax creation in the city of Glendale. And yes, I mean, I am looking at these things, and and I'm not trying to give my hand away as I'm speaking, but, and I'm looking at this off-site and onsite parking analysis that has been done, one that is a 2010 versus one that is, was just now, and they are very, very close. I mean, if you look at the numbers, there are not much difference. Now, one point that the staff brought up was, this was done based on the existing as opposed to the expansion. And that's the question that I have from you. This is, the long protracted desolation was to get to this point. What what is this considering? The the added use, the added 500, 600 square feet, or the present? I mean--
No, I do, I do believe, Mr. President, Commissioner, I do believe that it does reflect the current situation, but it does not change anything in what we had presented or what they have envisioned, because of the very fact that, again, I am adding cooling area, I'm adding storage area. I mean, what the hell, at the end of the day, I'm not adding sales area. I mean, I do not have sitting area, I cannot accommodate people. What I'm doing is, I'm just making, you know, your your point that, you know, I may add an employee, you know, it's it's more logical, if you so will, than than adding to the number of cars coming and getting. My turnaround of the cars, and as you see in both reports, is extremely short, it's the nature of the business. Secondly, I am providing, well, I'm not providing, the city is providing something, if you look at that, you know, 80, 90, on-street parking in the immediate vicinity, forget about your question, which is, this is addressing on the west side, the east, the west side of it, not even the east side of it, but I mean, if I'm parked across the street, I still can't come across. So I do think that the present situation, as far as the parking demand is going to be, and I agree, by the way, there might be, for example, on certain rush-hour times, for example, Saturday between, you know, noon or 2:00 or whatever, that may be a congestion. I agree with that. I mean, that's a fact of life, this happens in front of my home. So that being the case, I do believe that the study report is correctly reflecting what is currently, but it will not be substantially different from from, you know, the process in the future, because what I'm doing is, if I'm delivering, it's immaterial. If people are coming and picking it up for five minutes, it's immaterial. And what what I'm actually adding, and I think I have emphasized that like 15 times by now, I am adding like 2,000 square feet, doubling the square footage, but I'm not doubling one sitting area, I'm not doubling one salesperson area, I'm not doubling one area that people can stand and do that. Hopefully, that is clear.
About when, when people come and actually sit down to discuss the design of the cake?
They do. Often, they do, they do, often, often, they do, like, you know, by, you know, they they do, you know, go online, talk to each other, people visit them.
Is that the new, the new office area in the back?
That would be, that would be in the office.
So do they expect having more people coming in and staying for longer periods of time so they can--
Can I have--
Yes.
If you check the floor plan, we do have an office in the existing retail space, that that process, you know, the customer coming, sitting down, discussing, it's conducted on the--
The bakery, right?
In the build, in the bakery area. The second floor office, as Marco mentioned, each to just to compromise somehow to reduce the number of the residential unit to get rid of that parking required for the unit. In reality, it will be just the owner's private office, when he, she's tired, she can go up to rest and to his--
So they're still expected to go into the bakery to do the--
Yes.
I mean, you don't, you don't take them--
You don't take them to the second floor. We do have the office on the bakery area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is, there is, I mean, I I think that was clearly, you know, so, you know, this is part of the mitigating measures, you know, that we changed the requirement to an office, because it has a lower parking requirement, and it's it's used by by the owner, so.
And do the parking spaces at all have a certain time limit right now, like five minutes, 10 minutes?
No, but you can impose that, I guess. You know, we have lost one parking, because when we are doing the the new code, we need to comply with the handicap parking, so we are losing actually the one parking that I mentioned, so, but, you know, that's something you could do. As as part of a condition, you could say, like, you know, pickup time or something. We have done that previously on brand, for example, in certain areas.
Mr. Lee?
Have you looked at the possibility of, instead of building out this new area for your coolers, incorporating that, the coolers, you know, you're you're changing the use of the the residential unit right now, you're comparing that over to a workshop. Have you looked at the possibility of locating that within your existing building?
There is, there is one thing that you need to remember, if I may. If you are in a food business, you cannot carry food items through the open space. So it needs to go from an enclosed space to an enclosed space. This is a requirement by the health department. So if I am having a production there, I cannot just take it, you know, my my bakery and just walk over, you know, through the parking lot and do that. That's 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 a major issue. That's why we have this pathway, it's a lot of loss of space, if you so will. I mean, if you look on architecture, it's a loss of space for me. But that is a requirement by the health department, because otherwise I cannot carry that from one space to the other.
Okay.
Have I talked too much?
Do we have any more questions?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Anytime, I'll be at your disposal.
Okay, great.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gar Nazarian, you're you're part of the applicant's team, right?
Yes. Just all the issues, it has been discussed clearly, just I want to bring to your attention one thing, that the staff talked about the floor area that we are adding to this business, and they can, they are not in the control how they will use it in the future. But by looking to the site plan and the building locations, the area that we are adding, we are proposing new kitchen area, it's far back in the property, it has no access to the, you know, public right of a or frontage to the street, so that back portion, it will be remain always kitchen. There won't be any change of use.
Okay. Thank you. Ante Trinidad?
Good afternoon, staff, members of the commission, planning commission. My name is Ante with Stevenson Real Estate, 1111 North Brand Boulevard. I am here to speak in favor of the applicant. I think it is given that in any variance application, there is an automatic statement that there is an imbalance in the parking. The reason why you have the variance procedure is to take a look at the comprehensive picture, rather than just the simple imbalance, because that is given. And if you adhere strictly to the reasoning that there's not enough parking, and adhere strictly to the mathematical relationship, there's really no reason for this hearing at all, or for the application. Now, it's kind of hard to to prove something that is negative, which is one of the pronouncements of the or the findings of the planner, that the applicant didn't prove the lack of impact. How do you prove a lot of impact? It also boils down to the standard that you have to use. How do you set the standard? Is it a definitive standard, or is it more by reasoning and logic, and by inference? And a lot of this, when you take into consideration, it's really by inference, by looking at all the pictures, with the whole picture. Commissioner Landrygan mentioned the two issues, or or the removal of two parking. I understand that that is offset by the removal of two residential units. There was an issue about imbalance in the parking, in in terms of employee. Let me give you something to think about. We have a successful business here, with very limited space. To accommodate expansion in business, all they are gonna do, if they don't have the space, is keep on adding employees in the smallest space that they have, work longer hours, and impact the neighborhood even more. What you are giving the applicant is an opportunity to modernize and mechanize, so that they can do it shortly, or shorter term, and in, with with less employees. That's gonna impact the neighborhood even less. You look at the parking, the parking is not just the imbalance, it's the management. When you look at West Hollywood, Pasadena, Beverly Hills, Westwood, they are in a much, much worse imbalance than than what we have. But look at how dynamic their their retail and commercial activities are. It's not because they adhere strictly to the relationship of how many parking you need, but it's the management of what is available there, in terms of resources. In fact, during the day that they have the production, that's when most of the-- that they have the production, that's when most of the, the residents are gonna be out. That happens in all the neighborhoods that I mentioned. During the day, they allow businesses to use available spaces, even street, for businesses. In the evening, they manage it and do it by permit to give the, the residential users the preference. And in this case, we're not even to that point. Now, if you don't provide enough space, what's gonna happen is just there's gonna be even longer queuing for people to do their business over there, and it's gonna impact even more. Saturday, let's take Saturday. Saturday, there's even less traffic in the area because Holy Family is closed on Saturday, at least most of the activities. And so you have less parking, less demand, and that opens up available space. And again, if you hamper, if you say, well, there's too much activity, good Lord, let's have more activities. You wouldn't want a business to be placed in an area where there's no density, whether it's dead. Who would want to be there? We're trying to play catch-up with Santa Monica and all the others. It's no different when we said no to all the liquor permit when it was being applied for, and now we're taking a second look and we're catching up. It's not really, liquor permit is bad by itself, it's how you manage it and how you enforce it. Same thing with here. It's not whether we have lack of parking, but how we manage it and how we look at the total impact, not just the strict mathematical relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to, to the point that the speaker just made, please do review the efforts that this city is taking right now in order to increase the efficiency for the streamlining, which was discussed at the council level. And I think you'll be, you'll be pleasantly surprised, that portion of that liquor permit that you were talking about, how to concentrate on the operated versus, this is all coming, and it's, and it's great news for our city.
Well, thank you very much for calling my attention to that, and I'm aware of that, and I am confident that you had a great deal in putting good information that results in the change in policy for the city.
Great, thanks. All right. If you have any questions? Staff would like to add anything else.
Just to recap, just a few items that staff had heard and what staff thought were, for example, when they were, in this case, when taken into account the street smart walk score. We do encourage obviously walking, it's just for staff to, let's say, if someone goes to pick up a cake, how far are they willing to walk with the cake? That's just one question that comes to mind. Where, another thing, when they mentioned they have delivery trucks, where are these trucks parked? Because this information was not presented to staff before. They
Well, won't they be delivering most of the time?
Right, no. So the question is, where are these delivery trucks parking? Are they parking on the street? Are they parking on site? If there are delivery trucks there now, staff does not have that information, and has never had that information. So that would be something that staff could have evaluated at the time. Also, in terms of evidence being presented, and I believe one of the, someone, one of the speakers that presented that and their testimony, in terms of evidence, a parking demand study is evidence. That information was not provided. For staff to analyze and determine, according to your parking demand study prepared by, let's say, a professional traffic engineer, it shows that you do have sufficient parking to support your proposal. That information was not provided. So staff does not have enough information. How is staff able to assess and evaluate a project in their favor? I will not touch or reiterate any additional information in terms of expansion of the kitchen, because that's all mentioned in the staff report, staff, that's included as one of the bullet points. Staff does not have control, or the zoning code cannot dictate or govern changes made in the future to, to residential tenants that, let's say, they're family members, but what happens in the future if a family member decides to move, maybe now a new, larger family comes in? Those points, I'm not gonna go into detail only because that's already mentioned in your staff report. And the same thing with the kitchen. We understand it's a cooler or freezer that, that's required, and that would not be a change in, or in this case, an expansion in the number of employees or customers. But again, the estate and it's in the report, staff does not, or the zoning code does not have control, cannot dictate or any change or future change in their floor plan. So if that is, that does occur, how would we know? And so that, that was sort of the reasoning that staff, or issue that staff had.
Well, if you consider that, I mean, the addition is a little bit with the refrigerator space, it's a bit awkwardly placed, that if they were to change it later on, it could be a bit limiting on how much they could actually change it after they did build the refrigeration space, this place, the location where they have it proposed.
I, I didn't understand the first part, if you can repeat.
Well, have, have you considered, I mean, just what they're actually proposing, it's a refrigeration space, and it's, it's located in a very specific area that's attached to it. It seems a bit limiting on, on how much they can change after that, as far as the use that they intending for right now.
Unless you want refrigerated seating.
Exactly.
But you can always remove refrigerated units, and that space would already be built there. So it could be reused many times. You can sell the unit and reuse it, and that would be
Well, it seems like a room. It's like a room, right?
There are various different ones.
But it could be used as a retail space.
It could be used as a retail space. It could have other uses that go with it, so that
Right now.
I mean, I think we have to look in the long term of the multiple uses that are there as opposed to just this use, because there are owners that change and ownerships change, and this may not work for this great bakery. They may move to a bigger place. And then whoever takes it over is going to benefit from the generosity of the reduction and, and not have the same, I would say, ethical changes and, and the response of hiring from the neighborhood. Not everybody does do that. And I would drive to, down here for these cookies.
I'd like to know about, I'd like to know about the delivery trucks. If, if you can only answer the, about the delivery trucks.
Okay, the delivery trucks, the delivery is done by a, let's say, contractor, which, when they have the delivery, they call in ahead of time, they schedule the delivery time, they will, they stop there, they load the delivery items, and
So they don't actually belong to you guys?
No, it doesn't belong to the business owner.
So you call the person and they come and get
Yeah, they are, they have a contract with the, the delivery guy. And two more things I can add, just for your clarification. The business owner is the landlord too, and she has established this business there. He has no plan to move out. And the other question, that refrigerator area, to change it to use to a retail, if you check the floor plan, that connection or the hallway that it comes into the front building, it enters in the kitchen area, you know, and nobody, it's going to take the, you know, the customers through the kitchen area to the new retail space.
Yeah.
That chance, it's, if not zero, two percent.
Minimal. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, you know, for my own clarification, there's 1090 score for change of use in the residential area. When that's been changed, just like the cooler area, you know, for future, what are the reasons they move out? And does that then become retail space that they can use for whatever the, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Good. Any other questions? Staff?
Just a reminder that the applicant does have a five-minute rebuttal time, if you would
Okay.
wanna have that now, that's appropriate.
Great.
And further to Commissioner Lee's question, parking reduction permits run with the use, not with the land. So if, if
So if the use was changed?
If this use was changed, then they're gonna have to come back for some other sorts of permits, because they'll still be non-conforming then.
So I wanna ask further on that. So now, when change of use is from residential to now retail, commercial. Now, so whatever, now, it's not, you're saying, right now it's bakery, but as soon as, you know, the use is changed, you know, the bakery is, is commercial. So any other different commercial comes into the space, that, that
Has to be
Parking reduction is removed?
It has to be
No longer valid?
Uh huh, right. And also, just, I'm, as the commission deliberates, I would just remind you that it's, will be difficult for us, almost impossible, to monitor who's living on the premises or how many employees walk. If the commission is inclined to grant the appeal, I would, it's maybe preferable to focus on the amount of parking that's available around the area. Therefore, that will not impose any conditions which are difficult to enforce over the long run, but it will also, you know, more importantly, free up the applicant to make the kinds of changes to the floor plan that they see fit.
I just wanna be, be 100% sure here. So what you're saying is that this parking reduction is good only for bakery and nothing else of this bakery?
That's correct.
So when bakery leaves, doesn't, it's, it's no longer valid?
That's right.
But there's also a florist there, and it's tied, this is tied to that. So, I'm sorry, it's florist, bakery, and residential. So if any of those change, it has to come back? That's the question I have. Because right now, we're seeing kind of changes here that, so it is not just for the bakery.
With the refrigeration.
It's for the florist, it's for the bakery, and it's for the residential. So I question that. I'd like to have some clarification on that.
The parking reduction permit is just for the bakery. It does impact the other uses in the center without a doubt, but the parking reduction only applies to the bakery.
And what about the uncovered two residential parking places that are not being provided or covered? So why is that in there if this is only for the bakery?
Taking two of the, turning into order the bakery of apparatus, that's why I think. Is that true?
They're also on the site, so they're part of what you're reviewing. There is shared parking. They clearly have shared parking, but the parking reduction is for the bakery, and that's all that's being conditioned. So when you put a parking reduction permit on, although it does affect other uses, it's when the bakery use changes that the parking reduction would be affected.
I have one more question. So the legal non-conforming use is no longer there, and so there'll be a new use of a new residential. And so the fact that there's no parking being provided there would require a separate parking variance, since you're telling me this is only for the bakery. Am I wrong?
So if you're asking if the residential units change to some other use which required more parking?
If there is now a reduction of, there's a, of two units, and the parking for the bakery says that they are asking for a reduction of 14 spaces, and the, there are no spaces, are those 14 spaces shared with the residential, which is required to have two covered spaces which are not being provided? My question is, is there now a need for another parking variance because they're not providing the parking for the residential?
My understanding
For the remaining one unit, I believe.
Exactly. There's now one unit. It is now no longer legal non-conforming. It was required to have two covered parking spaces. This is only for the bakery. Is there a separate parking reduction required for that change?
But it's my understanding that they consider that two required units for that residential, one unit remaining in that 14.
But apparently, I don't know if that's valid. I'm asking, is that a valid combination, since there, it only goes with the bakery?
Okay. If, if the commission is, would grant this, we'd like a couple minutes recess to sort this out with our attorney.
Thank you.
Great. All right, we'll have recess, a couple minutes.
All right, we'll have recess a couple of minutes. All right, we're back in from recess. Staff, would you like to report on what you have found?
Sure. So the question before us was stemmed from the earlier question of whether the parking reduction permit applies only to the bakery or to the whole site. So after having reviewed the code sections, we determined that the most reasonable way to apply this this chapter is to apply it to the entire site. So that if there were some more intense use that moved into the florist shop, we would have to reevaluate. We would have to evaluate that in the context of this parking reduction permit.
Good. All right, can we would you like to add anything else to that? All right, does applicant want to have a rebuttal period of five minutes?
Just to give you a hard time. I do not have five minutes actually to I won't I won't burden you with that.
All right.
Just I'm here at your disposal. If you have further questions, you know, from me, I think you have a good overview of the project. I think the staff both, you know, both sides, they did answer your question. I think the issue of the delivery was correctly answered. I do think that on the issue of something that Commissioner Landgren is like an interest, you know, concerned about the residential, remember that we have three residentials with two parkings. We have eliminated two residentials and two parkings. So that that is in fact a sacrifice that the project is doing to to make it accommodated. So, you know, we are aware of that's why we are actually here. Other than that, I think, you know, the case is clear enough for you. If you have any questions, I'm at your disposal. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
I just want to clarify something that Mr. Foy just articulated. So then the intensity of the use will be revisited if any one of these uses change on this site?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it changed to just another bakery owner, it's still the same use, right? I mean, the use has to change from bakery to something else or flower shop to something else? Is that what you mean by?
It depends on what kinds of findings the commission makes. If you want to if you want to make if you were to grant the appeal and if your findings are based on on the characteristics of this bakery versus other bakeries, then we might have to look at the characteristics of a new bakery. But if you make more general findings about bakeries in general or the characteristics of the site and the surrounding area, then we wouldn't have to review the characteristics of each specific bakery use.
Right.
Does that make sense?
But for now, it's just a change in the use bakery to something else. It'll have to come back, right?
And that's and
It depends on the find on what on if the commission is going to approve it, depends on on what characteristics you call out as justifying the the reduction.
Right. Good. Do we have anything else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing.
Of course.
Portion and we're going to get into deliberation. Who would like to go ahead first?
I want to hear all the people.
All right, who wants to go?
Sure, I'll take a stab at at this thing. I am first and foremost, the big issue here is really the parking, the number of the parkings, obviously. And I tend to lean towards the fact that when you have storage, when you have kitchen, the explanation that was given to me is perhaps not compelling, but reasonable. That that does not necessarily add to the intensity of the use. And many, many times before, I've also been part of or witnessed similar situations where there has been discretionary allowances given for an area that is storage, for an area that is kitchen. So it has not counted towards the FAR or what have you. This bakery does not have a sitting area or does it? I wasn't sure. That's something that I wanted to find out. And if this use continues the way it does, by Nelson Nygaard's information provided to us today by staff, and when I compare it to a certified engineer that did the the parking demand study for a couple of days, Nelson Nygaard's information is Saturday and Tuesday, and the other one was Friday and Saturday, which I think is even more intensified than Tuesday and Saturday. Then the the colors that I see on the charts are all green, which really talks about the percentage of usage, which is between zero and semi odd percent versus the the orange colors. And for those in in at home listening to this thing, these colors intensify different degrees of usage. I'm also looking at the appendix from Nelson Nygaard, and I'm counting the number of the parkings that are available around this establishment. And this in fact helps me to look at or or accept what what this engineer report has been for the traffic study that the the appallant has provided to us. That's the first thing. So I don't believe for a small bakery, increasing the kitchen area and reducing two residentials, doing away with two residential uses, I think it's a great deal of compromise. So that's the first point that I wanted to make. The second point, I'm going to go back again to the walk score. This really is the interaction of folks that live and work in that area. This is a high walk score. What that's the significance of it is very simple. A lot of folks in that area choose to walk rather than drive. And that's something that this city has been trying to do more and more to get people to walk, live, you know, the 24 hour or the 18 hour downtown where we're talking about. There's no reason why it cannot exist in Glendale Avenue. So this walk score also speaks volumes to me. And I'm convinced that, you know, by the way, when when folks go to bakery, I don't when I go to bakery, I don't buy a 55 pound cake every time I walk into a bakery. I go in there, I buy cookies and what have you. So, you know, this 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 argument that you cannot carry a cake, a huge cake with you five blocks, I agree with you, Mr. Toledo, that's true. But I can carry a couple of bags of cookies and from the looks of me, you know I can. And so and that's and that's 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 what I also believe has happened here and will happen again. Then I also did a little bit of research on my own by talking to my sister, to my wife, to my daughter. How long do you take when you go to a bakery? Seriously, I mean, well, my 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 wife says a little bit more than 15 minutes, but the rest of them were under 10 or 12 minutes. So this also is plausible. This is also acceptable to me unless you're on Bryant Boulevard in Portos. By default, you cannot get in and out in less than a half hour. And and I can promise you that parking will be an issue and is an issue in there too. Having said that, I really believe that we can make the findings, we can we can we can find for the appallant and and grant them the the parking reduction. That's my opinion.
Great. Who would like to go next? Slanjing.
I love bakeries. And I've had cookies at this bakery. What I would like to say, though, is there was another issue that I'd like to look at in the staff report on page five. It says, staff advised the applicant that multiple entitlements, variance and parking reduction permit would be required if the residential parking provided was not covered and enclosed in compliance with zoning regulations. That's why I asked the question, and I still have that concern if that is the case, even if we approve this, because to me, that seems to be an issue that is part of the whole. I will let staff think about that. And but I so it's the no covered parking for the residential. It's changing this use from residential to a mixed use, which removes its nonconforming status, which means it has to meet the code, which has those two required covered parking spaces. So that's the first element that it's not meeting. There are 14 required spaces that are not being met. You can't count on street parking in Glendale. So to me, to add that in there is clouding the whole discussion here of how many parking spaces there really are. And they are for the public. They're not for the commercial use. They're removing the two covered spaces and providing what I think is going to be a great space. But if this owner leaves and you could take the front and convert it to a sit down restaurant, keep the nice new refrigerated area in, move all of your prep area to the back, and you would be able to have a more intense use without much change. And that could happen. And I don't even know how much of a zoning permit you would need, whatever the permit would be. I believe that we should really work to make small businesses able to be accommodated. But I don't know if this is the right site to do that. I don't know if there's enough parking space. I really would hope that this bakery would have the same business as Portos and that there would be a long queue for half an hour, and I bet you they would too. So to me, what's happening is the reduction is is something I have a difficult time with in South Glendale. I think there's not enough parking for many of the uses that we've done now down in South Glendale. And I have hesitancy for those reasons. I specifically have a hesitancy because I I don't know even if we have the right to make this parking reduction cover the the residential that's not covered because of the fact that a variance may be needed for that. It's not just a reduction. I have a question on that.
But what's the answer to that, Mr. Foy?
We're going to reopen the public hearing.
In the staff report, the section of the staff report that you're quoting from is in response to the applicant raising a point that he thought he was going to get a positive recommendation from staff. It may be factually correct that the case planner did did say that. However, during our during later review of the of Ms. Emotitis's decision, as well as the huddle we just had, we believe that the most reasonable way to implement this chapter on parking reduction permits is that it would supersede the variance and that it it we no longer offer variances for parking. We I mean, we fear we could, but we steer people towards parking reduction permits when they're arguing about the characteristics of their use or their their
Okay.
So anyway, we believe that our variance, the previous variant, I'm sorry, the issue of not having covered parking spaces could be covered under this parking reduction permit.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Close the public hearing. Mr. Lee.
My reporting records in the past have shown that I'm I'm pro business, that I vote in the way of encouraging people to develop the area. And, you know, this bakery here, actually, the the property owner is the owner of a bakery. And the struggle that that I'm, you know, going through right now is that, yeah, I do believe bakery is unlike other business, is not going to really intensify the the parking issues. And, you know, with their 99% delivering those cakes and their portion of the business more so increasing towards making of the cakes. So and yet So, and yet, I'm looking at this parking reduction at the same time, building out more than 500 square foot new addition on the property. And although the bakery may not be considered the same as other businesses in the category of needing parking spaces, to me, this is, this is quite a, you know, quite a hurdle for, for me to, to overcome, to see and justify approving this or overturning the decision by the hearing officer. You know, there are cases where, you know, we've looked at, you know, to, you know, for the need and, and look at many aspects of the case when you're dealing with borderline cases. This here, we're talking about really high number of parking spaces that are required plus addition. Plus, I'm looking at the, the traffic maps here, and they're all in the greens and yellows, which is anywhere from 50% to 90%, meaning that there are, around that area, I know Commissioner Landrigan talked about, we cannot count on street parking spaces, and, and we can't. But, you know, we, we, you know, we could take a look at that. And then I see that there are only 59 spaces there. And if we have over 80% uses, you really don't have that much space on the street really to, to park either. So for that reason, you really cannot count on the street parking. So I've been really struggling with this because I want to help this business so that they can continue to grow. But I just cannot, cannot see myself, you know, approving this, the parking reduction variance of this magnitude.
Good. A few months ago, a group that I'm very much involved with called Walk By Glendale, the members of it expressed a lot of interest that there's a lot, some really good bakeries in Glendale, especially in South Glendale in this area. So we held a pastry walk. It's like the first ever pastry walk we ever held. And it was mostly the pastry shops in much, it's more south than where Garines is located, around Chevy Chase and, and Glendale Avenue. And within a few miles, we walked to like five pastry shops. We all got together in one location, and we walked everywhere. It was, it was really remarkable just how many pastry shops are in that area. We didn't get to all the way to Garines, but I think a future, one of these events, we would love to do that. And I had really no idea just how many pastry shops there are. I would call this area like maybe a pastry row in Glendale. And just how walkable it is to get to all these places. So that was really nice. And there were about 20 of us, and we, we all really discovered all this, and it was, it was great to taste out all these pastries. So it was a really unique thing, I think, that Glendale has, all these pastry shops in this location. And I think as we are developing a South Glendale community plan right now, this is something that should be definitely considered because this is sort of an organic development that's happened here without any kind of planning or any kind of, you know, top-down approach. It has sort of come from the bottom, all these really interesting, very unique pastry shops that's making this place super, have, build a lot of character that might lack in other places in the city. And I think that's something that we want to support. Downtown locations, usually, they all have parking problems. You go to downtown LA, you go to any downtown location in Manhattan, they all have parking problems. So the idea that we're going to have really good parking in downtown Glendale, or we're going to make really good parking available in the future, it's, it would be contrary to how most downtowns actually work. And if we're expecting to have a really thriving downtown in, in the city of Glendale and in this area, then we cannot expect to have amazing parking available all the time because it's going to be contrary to the very fact that we're trying to make it a very walking area. People park here, they don't necessarily will come to the bakery shop to park and get a cookie or whatever, but they're going to probably park a couple of blocks away, like you do in any downtown location. And you're going to walk to Garines, you're going to get to the flower shop, you're going to go to get a kebab a block away from there, or go to a restaurant. You do multiple things, and I do that when I, when I go to one of these places. I have a restaurant, and then I walk over and I get a pastry from one of these really great pastry shops. So I think that's what we're trying to encourage. Now, we've, we've really defined downtown in Glendale to just like specific two streets, which is, which is funny because actually, this whole area of South Glendale is very, very dense and very walkable, like they say. The fact that they have four employees who walk to this place is remarkable, and just one employee who drive here. So the idea that we are holding this location to the same standards as anywhere else in Glendale of four parking spaces per thousand square feet, I don't think that's justified for this location. And this is something we've had before, and I'm glad the city is actually considering to how to change this process. And I think the South Glendale Community Plan, which I hope this bakery is involved with and other people, stakeholders in this area are involved with, should really look into the zoning and the parking requirements for these types of uses and how they can change for this area. The addition that's being made in this pastry shop is like 400, 500 square feet. There is no addition of cash registers. There is no addition of an area where people come and, and customers actually buy places. It's an addition of refrigeration space and an office. So I, I cannot put my head around on how this is actually going to exacerbate a problem. I think it's actually going to benefit the bakery, I think it's going to benefit the area, and I think it'll actually encourage more people to be walking. If anybody wants to buy a big cake, they will have it delivered, as they noted. It's not something you're going to actually drive up and pick up these three level cakes, and you're not going to walk and get it either. It's going to be delivered. So with those things said, I do agree with Mr. Astorian, and I, I would, I would find the findings to make this happen and, and allow them to have the parking reduction variance.
Mr. Chair, may I, and I don't know if this is...
Yeah, and...
...parliamentarily appropriate. Well, no, I'll, I'll refrain.
Okay.
Once again, we're heading towards a deadlock.
I know.
Shall I make a motion?
So, all right, so if we are still stuck with the, the same decision, I guess we are, in a deadlock?
Well, we have to have a motion to decide that, don't we?
Yeah. I mean, your options are to continue it for Mr. Sheets to review the tape, or you could make a motion now. Also, honestly, we just got this study today, and we just kind of...
Yes.
What about the staff's comment or request about, you know, parking study?
It's here.
No, no, not, not, I mean, not, not this, but, you know, actually, you know, I think you refer, you're referring to an independent parking study that was for, you know...
Yeah, this information, like was stated, was just received today. We didn't have this information presented to us at the hearing. And during the appeal, or excuse me, when the appeal was filed, again, the information was not furnished. So that information, like I just stated, is, is new information that was received at 7:00 AM this morning.
Mm-hmm.
Is the study suffice? Is it sufficient enough?
Well, we do need more time to review it, frankly, because since it was submitted this morning, staff was not really able to assess it to its fullest. So if, if we had more time, it would be helpful to be able to properly evaluate the parking demand study.
Yes. Slanjir.
I would like to ask staff a question because I guess you'd have to open the public hearing again. But if, though it was said here that this was the existing situation and not the revised situation that's being proposed, so I don't know if this parking study needs to be amended to do that, but I would be more than willing to continue this, to have the parking study be part of this. I don't know if we can send it back to the zoning administrator to reconsider it with the new information. I'm not sure.
Do we need to open the... Yeah. Okay, we're going to reopen the public hearing. Yes.
Forgive me, I don't... parking study. There is a statement made in, in the parking study that was provided based on the current situation. But as part of the conclusion, it does state, "As long as the proposed expansion does not add any type of seating arrangement in the bakery where customers have to stay longer periods, the current parking supply should be adequate to meet the proposed expansion without the need to add additional parking." So I'm not sure if an additional parking demand study would add additional information.
And can a parking study include off-site parking and be considered valid?
Technically, no.
Okay. All right.
But again, forgive me, I'm, I'm going to defer that answer to Mr. Tim Foy.
I guess the point I was trying to make earlier was that we did just receive the applicant's parking study this morning. This information from the city's earlier parking study, we just hunted down...
A minute ago.
In less than an hour before this hearing opened. We just haven't had much time to digest it, is my point.
What are our options?
Well...
To defer to...
Chair, you could remand it back to the hearing officer. You could continue it and allow staff to do further analysis of the parking study, but then you'd have to reopen the hearing for comments on that portion. Or you could just continue it without any further analysis, without any further testimony from Mr. Sheets to review the tapes and the information provided. Or you could make a motion to sustain or deny the appeal.
If we, may I continue? If we remand it back to the hearing officer, is there an additional charge? Is there an additional charge for all of these?
It's not really clear in our, our fee study that there would be, in our fee resolution that there would be an additional charge. So probably not. It's something we need to clarify in our fee resolution.
Okay.
May I suggest the following to all my fellow three commissioners. You have a parking study that tells you that if, if, if the use does not intensify, whether technically correct or not, I have, I have the stamp or the seal of an engineer from State of California on this report. You have a study that tells you that if the use does not intensify, this parking, however way you look at it, off, onsite, should be sufficient for these purposes. And we already know that the portion that is the addition does not include chairs, unless, as I told you, it should be refrigerated seating, does not include basically spaces for clients to visit and so forth. This has to do with the refrigeration. This has to do with the kitchen. When you factor in 40% of their business being delivery, when you know that this does not intensify the use, when we know that it's 15 or 20 minutes, we have a parking study that says, this is what my findings are. I think, in my opinion, that's sufficient enough evidence for us to be able to move forward with this thing. Remember, we're not talking about a 5,000 square feet addition. We're talking about 500 square feet that is going to be used for storage and so forth. But those are my, my thoughts. If, if you feel that that's the way to go, then I think we should take a motion up and down on this thing. If not, then I, you know, don't mind for it to go back, let the staff and applicant take care of it, which should have been done to begin with if Ms. Toledo had all the information from them in a timely manner as opposed to the last minute.
So we have a choice to either remand it back to Ms. Toledo so they can, or Ms. Zemanatis...
Zemanitis.
Zemanitis.
Zemanitis. Sorry. I'm very sorry. To review or make a decision now, and that would, so those are our two choices, I guess.
Or continue it, and...
We can continue.
She's going to sit here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, do we have a, do you have any, any other input? Okay. Do we have a motion for any one of them?
I move that this case be remanded back to the hearing officer.
Good.
Second.
You have a second.
Okay. So we have roll call on that?
Second, is it?
Mr. Lee. So wait, I, I do have a question, I'm sorry. If we do remand it back to the staff, it's going to the hearing officer, and the hearing officer has to make another decision?
Mm-hmm.
And if they rule out not in favor of them, then they...
Come back here.
Come back here, well, only if they file for variance again?
Only if they file an appeal.
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 Right, which means it costs them more money.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I should also clarify that if you do remand it, they will have to pay postage cost for the new noticing.
Okay.
Which is?
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
About a few hundred dollars.
But then, if we, if we continue, if we continue it, it just goes to the next public hearing, and then we're waiting for Mr. Sheets to have a say?
If you don't wish any further analysis, yes.
Okay.
Well, you could, you would.
But we're in the middle of a vote, so we either have to vote.
Well, I'm not sure about my vote, what my vote is. Yeah.
But I guess...
There's a motion.
I don't know what the, there's a motion on the floor, and parliamentary procedure is that we have to vote on it.
Okay.
We can discuss it ourselves, but we can only discuss the motion.
Okay, so let's vote on it. Yes.
There's Astorian.
No.
Planning Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Chairperson Yisai.
No.
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 Okay, so let's talk about it again.
I, I'd like to, is the public hearing open, Chair?
No.
Can you please open it?
Sure, the public hearing is open.
I don't mean to make this any more complicated than what it is because in my eyes, it's not. We're just trying to make, well, the Nelson Nygaard study, the excerpt study you've given me, I'm looking at two-hour intervals.
Hold on.
Is that, was that study done on, for two-hour basis only about three years ago?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know how often those occupancies were checked during those two-hour intervals.
Okay. All right, that answers my question.
Well, I mean, I, I think what makes sense is if we just continue it and get more analysis and, and then have Mr. Sheets here to make a decision. Since you guys have something else.
Well, I second it if somebody makes a motion to continue it with staff doing the analysis on the parking study.
Or reviewing the...
Reviewing, yeah.
...provides.
And then getting back to us.
Are you making that motion?
I guess I'd make the motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Do we have a roll call?
Yes.
So, we should, I'm sorry, it probably should have been part of the motion, to continue it to the next hearing date?
Yes.
We should be able to get this done.
Compared to April.
Before, it won't be before Easter, right?
I just wanted to be after Easter.
I believe the next meeting, Mr. Lee will be out. Did you want to continue it to the meeting after that? It would be the second meeting in April.
That's, that's fine.
Laura, what date would that be?
I believe it's April 17th.
Seventeenth.
April or May?
April 17th.
It might be a new commission by then.
Maybe.
Could be. Yes.
I won't be here, so. I will be gone the entire month of April. Yes. I'll be back on April 25th.
Do you want to pick a date in May?
I think May 1st and May 15th.
May 1st?
I think we, didn't we continue one case?
We did. We have the May 1st, we have the 11, 111...
1372.
Central.
We could tackle both.
Okay, even better. We'll have two similar cases on the same day.
They are very similar.
Yes, and the same area, too.
Very similar.
The same case planner, too.
It'll be very efficient, I guess.
May 1st.
Okay, my apologies about not...
So, I will...
No, that's quite all right.
I'll revise my motion then, I guess, or...
And amend it to...
To date certain, May 1st, without further notice.
And I will second that amendment.
Do we have to do a roll call on that as well? Okay, well, let's do that. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Chairperson Yassine.
Yes. Great, thanks. Planning Commission items, now the planning department updates.
I will just mention, with the commissioner already referring to the city council last night initiated, a series of amendments to the code, as well as some practical measures that might not require code amendments concerning streamlining the process for planning entitlements. These cover a variety of topics, from design review to conditional use permits to variances, to the environmental planning board. There's probably more that I'm missing. And these will obviously involve a great deal of outreach to the community, to both residents, realtors, developers, architects, property owners, and will certainly come before this commission, before they wind back at city council's lap.
Okay, great. Any other updates? I have a question. What is the status on the South Glendale Community Plan?
Right now, we're writing up different neighborhoods and doing neighborhood descriptions. We're also looking into, we have a small subdivision ordinance that is coming hand-in-hand with it, looking at certain areas in South Glendale, multifamily areas that may be suitable for that. And we're also looking at some of the mixed use that's going on in the area. There's a tropico study going on that will be incorporated into the plan, so that's proceeding. So, we have quite a bit of activities that are going on related to it, but the plan itself is still in draft form.
And how about, is there, was there an advisory committee you have set up, and...
No, we do not have an advisory...
What is the timeline of all of that?
At this point, we do not have an advisory committee. And right now, we're waiting for the results of the tropico study that's going on right now. We also have a freeway 134 study that is being completed. That result will also be incorporated into the South Glendale Community Plan.
So, those will be kind of the foundations of the South Glendale Community Plan?
Right.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Foy, last meeting, we talked about the mobility study, whether or not a copy of it, doesn't have to be color, black and white copy can be made available to all commissioners, because I think that's important. In fact, when time comes in parking reduction cases, or any other case that gets, that is involved, parking and so forth, the Nelson Nygaard excerpts for that area to be presented, to be part of the package also would be a tremendous help to us, too. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? There looks like there's a city council forum tonight, so I'm sure everyone is going to be running over there after this meeting.
Both of them.
All right, great. Thank you, guys. This meeting is adjourned.